Oh, there it goes.
Who's ever on the line, can you please mute your phone?
We're gonna start with Park Board? Huh? So that's just County Park, right? Did all the commissioners get to County Park?
Yep.
Lisa?
Good morning.
Good morning. I think that, yeah, if you want to talk about your budget, do we have questions? Do we all want her to talk? To explain things? Sure, go ahead.
I can, I can certainly do that. Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director. You all have received the county, the Park Board proposed budget detail justification that I gave you at the meeting. Yep, that's the one. And so there's, in that proposal is basically the items that you have in front of you here, with the exception of the Phase One building plan estimated at 8.5 million in here. That's not anything solid. I did explain that there was potentially at the motorsports park that we needed to secure some shifting ground that's moving into the track right in front of the grandstands. I don't have estimated costs for that yet, so that may be something that does change with what we're anticipating doing in terms of the capital improvement or motorsports park budget request.
And that's where you feel the 80,000 would be targeted?
Most of it, yes. And then I think, you know, with what we were planning on doing at the motocross track, they needed something to sit on. They have all-day events. Their events last from the morning all the way into the evening when they have those. And so in the detail, I asked for something covered, something that we could put there as far as a grandstand that would be covered for them to keep them out of the heat a little bit, too. They would have more events for us and that sort of thing if that was the case. And so that may just shift our focus a little bit so that we're conscious about some of the funds that we're requesting from the public. So that I won't know for another week or so. He thought he'd have it to me.
Just so the commission knows, when you're, when you're looking at the County Park, if you kind of notice it has everything listed below. All those are part of that same County Park line item of 1,045, 15, 816. All those items actually come out of that line item. It's just we broke it down. So if you add in, if you add up all those items, then that would equal what the County Park would be. Because if you look to the left, all those are blank next to insurance, capital improvements, because they're all coming out of that 1,045, 15, 816.
And the fair event activities, that money, that's?
Yeah, that would be Refrider Commission in 2022, we approved $80,000 for them. And then there was some money set aside for monster trucks, the Derby, a couple of different barrel races that came in from out of state and from Bismarck. And then the Speedway and motocross events that they had during that fair time. Although our fair events were spread out for almost a month, but that's, it still lies within the, what's technically the fair.
So did the Refrider Commission give you the invoices, so it did come up to 80?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Yep, they submitted all their payments, just like they would normally do. And so it was very easy. They were very, very great to work with this year. It was nice and easy. We got them the reimbursements the way they needed to, and they were very happy with that. And I know they took a tremendous loss on some of their events this year with the weather and the raining for the concert and some of that. And I told them, because they submitted way more than their 80, and that if I had anything extra in here, we could talk about, you know, approving some more dollars for them, just based on what I have left in the budget.
Lakeview Estates, or what's planned there for?
For the Lakeview Estates one, you know, I budgeted 10,000. This, in 2022, we have 20,000, and that was to create the play park piece to it. And then this is just to maintain and add anything extra that we maybe didn't think about. We're waiting for the landscaper, landscape architect to design where the parking needs to be and make sure that we're up to code, because we're gonna change a few things. And then looking at just doing an overlay, we don't know if we can do that on the existing court so that we can make it a basketball, volleyball, and tennis court, a multi-use one. That's, so that's, all those dollars are for is maintenance, because we've taken over now the mowing and the spraying of that. And then we've got some tree work to do. They have Kurt's looking at it again. He thought it was winter kill on some of the trees. So we've got some tree removal to do on those dead trees. And one of the residents wanted him to look at it again because he believes it's tree mites, and so spider mites. And so they're going to look at that if that needs to be sprayed, whatever they do. And so that's the costs in, in here.
Okay.
Thanks. Is that the only rural subdivision that we maintain a park?
Yes.
Is there any more questions on line items? So we want to go through how we want to do it, commissioners, is go through each individual department and then at the end, talk about the raise or raises? How do we want to do that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to start?
Yep. Okay, we'll go to Human Resources?
Hello, Joetta Piercy, Human Resources Director. I don't really have much on my budget besides salary. I guess for travel and, one thing with the salary is this year, we were just going to combine the risk management into the main salary line item. Doesn't really need to be separated out. And then on travel and training and dues, keeping the same amount we've budgeted in the past, just splitting it up differently. Travel and training increasing, moving the money up to that because dues are only about $229 or so every year. So for my dues. And then I think the one other thing we discussed at our individual meeting with Auditor and Neil was the tuition reimbursement or continuing education policy that we, you approved earlier this year in June. And we had threw out there a $3,000 starting amount. And so we need to talk about if I'm going to have that in my budget or if we want to just have it in the general budget. I mean, it'll be in the general fund. But, you know, we'll have to administer that every year. People would apply for that, and then it would come before you to approve it. So.
Do we want to add it into the HR, the budget, or just leave it in the general? And commissioners go through the applications and then we? And then go through, let Joetta go through and pull it out of the general?
Yeah, I don't know that it makes a big difference. I think the administrative part, the administrative part, she was going to monitor to make sure that it was eligible for the provisions that we allowed for. Where the money comes from, I guess, probably should come out of general.
Yeah.
I would make the recommendation just to add it into, on her budget, so that way we can talk about it, what you guys would like to do, and we can just have it as a line item, and we'll be able to track it better. Because there's a lot of other items that aren't on people's budgets that are having to be tracked separately. So I would just do it on the human resource budget and make it easier.
Probably easier to track it if we keep it nervous.
Yes. Yep. And, and Human Resources is already out of the general as it is, so it's not like it would make any difference.
So we'll leave it in the general. We'll just add a line item if it's used.
Add a line item to her human resource budget.
Yes. So the risk management and the salary, you were getting those and they were just getting paid separately?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Was just automatically putting, I think, 5% to risk management and 95% to HR.
Okay, thank you. The auditor?
Could we maybe move up some of the others so they can go back to work?
Sure.
Karen's got to be here the whole meeting anyways.
Okay, good, good idea. The planner? Steve Josephson?
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Josephson, County Planner. You've got the budget in front of you. The, the only, the only change there in terms of line, line items is just, is just salary. And I had met with Commissioner Franchuk and with the auditor, you know, to discuss that. And that's what we had, we had come up with. The city, I've talked to the city, both the city administrator and to the city administrator, they do want me to come back next year, especially now that they're in a situation where there is no planning, there is no planning director there. And I'm not sure what they're going to do with that position. I guess a lot of that's going to depend upon the hiring of the new engineer. That should be, that should be happening sometime soon. I did want to ask for a change in status from hourly to salaried. If, you're probably aware that, you know, Shawna Davenport had put in a request for money from the state to do a comprehensive plan. And if we get that fund, it's probably going to take more than just, you know, the normal work time that I would do. I anticipate there'd probably be more meetings and work or whatever associated with that that may go beyond 40 hours, you know, 40 hours a week. And, you know, they're just, it just doesn't seem like the sort of thing that, you know, for a position like this where you would get overtime, you know, for that. So I'm just asking to be, you know, to, to be changed from, from hourly to, you know, to exempt. I know there was some discussion about department heads and exempt, you know, and the exempt status at the last, the last County Commission meeting. And that's all I really have.
Okay.
No other changes in, in line items. So travel and, travel and memberships and so on, propose to keep that the same.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Does anybody have any questions?
I was just gonna point out that on his 5% salary, you'll look under overtime. I took the overtime allotment out of there if he was to go salary, because he obviously wouldn't have that line. But then if he's regular, then I left that overtime line in there for, to show the other sides, so you can see the difference.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, I think it's worth a difference of $1,000 or something like that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Do we need a motion to make him exempt salary?
I think we could do that at the end.
Madam Chairman, I would recommend if we're gonna have an overall department discussion in regard to department heads and that, I would, let's, let's put it to the end and, because there's a number of department heads that fall under that conversation. So if that's okay with you?
Yeah. Is that okay with all commissioners? Okay, we will, Karen will explain the state's attorney. She's not here, so we'll explain that at the end to keep everybody going. The recorder? The recorder? Hello? Hi.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Cassian, Stark County Recorder. Not a lot has changed in my budget. We moved the copier maintenance agreement since the, most of the courthouse is now under one contract. So we moved that one to the IT. And then for travel, I bumped it back down to 2,000 because I clearly didn't spend as much this year as far as I thought I was going to, but I wanted to budget for it just in case last year. So I did bump that back down to 2,000. Other than that, the, you guys see what I proposed?
Kim, you mentioned that, that your deputy auditor is, is leaving and you're hiring. Do you know if you're hiring somebody at that same salary or?
Um, so.
I know you weren't quite sure.
I believe it's posted at 28, and it's also probably going to depend on experience as well. So that'll kind of be the range. So it's roughly about the same, because I think it's at 2750 right now, I think.
Yeah, it's right in there.
So I think it was a 50 cent bump when we posted it. And then, so that's kind of what we're proposing is the 28, also depending on experience, so it could go up a little bit. But that I would hopefully know once I actually get somebody hired that I'll know a little bit more where that number is gonna go, but it's probably not gonna flex too much.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tax equalization. Natalie?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mine's, I don't know. I, I see on here Karen's got the Richardson contract moved from IT. That's a brand-new contract, but I think that it's through Complex. It's for industrial appraisal of Red Trail and the old Halliburton plant that Bill Platzen bought. The city wants to contract with Complex to do that. If they can just do the contract completely through them and don't need the county's help as far as payment-wise goes, I think they're gonna just do it through them, so it won't even be in my budget. They just had their meeting, so I don't know what the answer is to that yet. But that 15,000 might not even be in there. That, and the only other change that I made was I reduced my overtime. I'm kind of with Joetta on the making my GIS in the salary one instead of two. It's the same thing. I mean, we get, if we get a 5% increase, I get a 5% increase. They make 95% of it GIS or whatever, the 13% and 87%, whatever. I mean, I would just as soon have one salary with it all together and be what I should be paid versus splitting the two departments or the two into. The reason it got that way is because when I, when I was hired back in 2004, the GIS, Diane wanted somebody that was willing to do GIS. So when she hired me, it was under the Deputy Tax Director's job description. And then when she retired and I took over, the GIS basically had to follow me. So then they did that separate line item for the GIS because of that situation. I've been doing it since I started in 2004, so I, I don't think it needs to be two line items. But that's totally up to you guys, however. I mean, I get paid the same whether we get a 6% or 5% or whatever percent increase. It's, it, it doesn't go per job description, so it doesn't really need to be two line item.
The fact it doesn't go per job description, that's where I have a little problem, because so many people use the GIS system in Stark County. Not just one on that amount.
What do you mean, use it? The, I mean, everybody uses it.
Yeah.
The Recorder's office uses it.
Yeah.
I'm the only one that maintains the parcel layer, though. I'm the one that, I'm the person that does the work to get the maps out there on the internet so that they can, so that the parcel, you know, the parcels are right, that subdivisions are in. Nobody does the maintenance on it. Todd does GIS with road department stuff. He GPS's his roads, his bridges, his culverts. He does completely different, different stuff than I do. Joel Lynn does the address points. So she puts in the address points. When she addresses a new house, she puts that point in. The three of us are the only ones that I know of, maybe Shawna, that actually do maintenance in the GIS system. Everybody uses it. But we're the ones that maintain it and keep it up to date so that it can actually be used.
Shouldn't this be split by four then, or do we just take it out, or we just add it into her salary? What do we do with that then?
Well, I, I think the point that Natalie's trying to make is that when this was put in in 2004, none of us were here, maybe Ken was. It was, sorry.
I think he's the one that split it out, actually.
He's the one?
He's the one that, when, when I negotiated with them, when I took Diane's job, they lowered my salary from what she was making. And then they put this line item in to kind of compensate for that extra just for the other job duty that Diane had never done, you know, because it was so, it's been separate forever, you know? And that's, that's the way they did it. And basically, it was just to get my salary up to kind of comparable or where they thought I should be as the tax director versus the deputy tax director. It's always been one lump sum, you know? I mean, I've never looked at it as, as two different things. It's just always been put on the budget that way, so.
Okay.
So I, I would fully agree that the GIS mapping should be part of the job description, that line number, line item should be removed. And how we, and then so the, again, for the, for just a point of refresher, this is the actual going into the GIS and doing the maps. When there's a new parcel, a new subdivision, whatever it is, Natalie is taking that information, whether it be survey, meets and bounds, any of those kind of things, and putting that track into the system. And I believe there's an opportunity to do that outside the department, but you're gonna pay for it. And the payment would probably, based on the letter I saw, would be more than this. So that's where it's at. And when Shawna gets up there, then the obvious question would be, is she putting information into the system as well that supersedes or goes over what you're doing? So that, that's the question I'm gonna ask at that point. So I think, again, this is a discussion that can wait till the end, so we have all the information.
Actually, Natalie, could I ask you something real quick? When I was doing your budget, like in putting your numbers, under your GIS mapping, you had 5,373,81. Do you normally get a raise on that second line or?
I, usually I get the same as everybody else. So I get 5%. Say, say we get 5% or a couple of years ago, we got a dollar.
Okay, so the pie is to both line items.
And put it towards the tax director and eight cents, you know, whatever it was, they divide it out. I don't get 5% on the GIS and 5% on the tax director.
Okay, that's good to know.
I only get 5% flat, and they separate it for payroll purposes, however they wanted to divide it out.
You get two separate payrolls.
No, I get one check, but in their software, it looks like I get two checks or I get two deposits. It's one's amount, it's one, but it comes out of two different line items, which is just one less.
It's a way to clean it up.
Her salary is split 70, 30. And so she has one salary amount, and then it just splits 70, 30. There's no, I mean, reason why. It has to be done that way.
So really, all this is, is house cleaning?
Right.
But I think we discussed it a little bit last year, too, about just combining them, because we did combine the risk management and everything else, so. I just had a question about that, because it kind of threw my numbers off when I put in the 5% and 6%, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah. No, I've always just gotten the same percentage as everybody else. They just, in their software, split it however they think it needs to be. I don't, I really don't know what the numbers are or why they did it that way, but that's the way it's always been.
Thank you, Natalie.
Anybody got questions?
Thank you. Thanks for listening to this small.
I, I have no idea why this one's smaller.
Okay, grounds and maintenance?
Just, just so you guys are aware, I, I went ahead and added underneath custodian additional budget lines because they're not really under Mike's budget, but he's the one that tells me what he needs. So I added those in there so that we could have a more accurate thing and not me just filling in any number that I think he might need for the courthouse building. So I added those on.
Not too much has changed. Courthouse maintenance, we did go up 10,000, just because we have upcoming possible projects next year that we don't want to be, but other than that, they have stayed the same, except for payroll, which is same as everybody.
Where are we at with that garage on there? Is that on here or anything, or that would be under the buildings? Huh?
The garage.
Oh, that.
It's done. The detached one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's done, been paid for.
Okay.
Came in right on or a little bit below? I think we were under budget. Yep, should have been a little bit on her.
And then if you look at Feidler's line items over here, you see that he has 50% one account, 50% the other account. That 41, 93, 34, the reason why we have it like that is because that's actually being taken out of the money we receive from social services. So 50% of his salary is being put towards that.
That's between the direct and indirect costs, correct?
Indirect.
Yes.
Indirect, yep.
Indirect costs. Which that could also change coming up in legislative session if they add more indirect money for it.
Yeah, we had a meeting about it in my Auditor Treasurer Conference, and, and that's all, it's a whole beast all in itself, so. But I just wanted you guys to know that when I do the, I will put back into the revenues so that we're not, you know, levying for the, through the general, you know, a full 198,000. I will have the social service revenue. I will have the social service revenue showing as coming back and reimbursing that. So that's part of my my worksheet, so.
Okay, is there any questions for Mike? Okay, if not, thank you, Mike. Um, elections will skip till the end. Public safety, Corey Lee.
All right, if you look at. My budget, I guess I'm gonna go from the bottom up here. You'll see under the cars line items, the new vehicle line items basically is what that is. This twenty-twenty-two, we used ARPA funds to cover that. So you'll see that that's uh, now represented as one hundred and sixty-five thousand. Uh, the next change is under vehicle expense. We went up twenty thousand dollars there. Obviously, that's just a gas. Uh, you don't know what's gonna happen with fuel prices or uh, vehicle maintenance. This year, other than some uh. Air conditioning units, we were pretty good with vehicle maintenance. Uh, it was mostly gas prices that are getting us this year. Uh, uniforms, we're looking at another two thousand dollars there. Prices are going up on everything, including that. Licenses and agreements, we're asking for another five thousand dollars there that essentially, I'm sure I'm missing something here, but essentially. Covers our celebrate system, Lexipol, which is our policy manual, uh, which constantly updates. Our Zerker program, which is our uh, reporting system and our body worn cameras, body worn utility systems. Uh, cell phones and error cards, we uh, looking at another five thousand there. And then uh, canine overtime and our CIU, which is our detectives. On call, we're looking at another ten thousand dollars there.
Corey, I think the next one up, just so you know, that special, oops, on call pay corporal detective. I talked with was wasn't that the one I talked with you about Lana with payroll? Okay, so you had it off your budget you sent me, but it is used, so I added it back.
The one I took off was the um, detective equipment.
Yep, you took off that one too, but you had missed this one also. So just so you know, if you're it's five thousand difference between mine and yours for what you sent me, it's that line.
Gotcha. I guess I visited with everything else with the with Dean and Neil as far as our portfolio holder. Portfolio holders about the salaries, so I guess if you guys have any questions about that.
Does anybody have any questions on the salaries? Any questions? Okay, if not, we will move on. The law enforcement maintenance.
Um, we can do that last cuz that's me again, so.
Okay, then we will move on to disaster emergency services.
Morning. Shawna Davenport, Director of Emergency Services. One second here. Okay. Um, I'm just trying to think. I'm just gonna go over the major changes. I took our overtime line down a little bit. It was at five, I took it to three. The travel, I increased it by a thousand for attending conference every year for at least one employee. Uh, telephone line, I took it down from fifty-five hundred to two thousand. Vehicle expense, um, I'm going to in the future be decreasing that to a thousand, but for this year, I I decreased it and then upped it to five thousand for a total of six because I would like to wrap the emergency management vehicle. So that it is like all the other emergency manager vehicles um, in the southwest region and across the state, actually. The radio equipment repair line, I'm also going to in the future decrease that to three thousand. But this year it's at seventeen thousand because I have fourteen thousand remaining to pay for the siren radio equipment. Twenty thousand was covered by grants, ten thousand five hundred covered by the Department of Emergency Services. So fourteen thousand is what is left for our need. I took down public information and training from three thousand to twenty-five hundred. I took down the radio tower from five thousand to two thousand. And I I increased the emergency operations center. That was just a formality. There was a bill that was paid twice in one year and I didn't notice that in the previous year, so I we had decreased the budget and it shouldn't have been. And then I also took down office furniture to fifteen hundred. That's it. Do you have any questions?
Shawna, I had a real quick question. In twenty-twenty-one, we paid under the cellphone allowance. Do you know if that was just in the wrong spot or? You don't get cellphone reimbursement, do you?
No, Bill wouldn't have been there. Bill used to.
Oh, okay, but you have a separate phone completely.
That just goes under telephone, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, I was I was curious before I.
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, um, hearing and I'll move on to the nine-one-one budget. Um, I do not have a new salary amount for dispatchers yet. I contacted them, but I didn't hear back. So I just left it at the two hundred and four thousand. That would be thirty-two percent of their salaries. I'm sorry, sixteen percent. The other sixteen is out of general fund. Um, the training for dispatch, I upped that um, fifteen hundred dollars because they have a new requirement for APCO certification going forward that costs that amount for each dispatcher total. So it went from thirty-five hundred to five thousand. Um, I increased travel for this as well for conference for at least um, one dispatcher. The city of Dickinson also contributes to that whenever they go. Um, public information, I just took it down to a thousand. And uh, the wireless fee for NDACO, I took that down a little bit. Was at forty-five, I took it to forty, and then our training stayed the same.
We have enough dispatcher?
There we have, I think they maybe have one or two positions open right now.
Is that included in this?
So no, we don't pay for their whole salary, so this would be this right here is for uh, fifteen, I think. Fifteen dispatchers is which is what they can have right now for the amount of positions we have in the center.
And do you have the another console for dispatch?
Yeah, so that um, Karen, we put Karen, after discussing in our um, meeting. We decided to do that as an ARPA fund request since it's a one time, so we were gonna.
I I put it at the bottom of the IT budget, so.
Okay, we can talk about it when we get to IT then.
And I'm not entirely sure on the the dispatcher line, the two oh four, usually we get those amounts from the city of Dickinson. I haven't got their budget or anything yet, so I'm not sure. I just put that amount in there so we'd have something. But I will say we don't, we don't levy any dollars for emergency nine-one-one or anything. The only part that comes out of our levy is um, the retirement and the the FICA.
Any questions?
So Shawna has a follow up to the earlier. The discussion uh, with Natalie.
Yes.
Are you a user or are you a provider?
I personally use it, but I and I do some things in it, but I am nowhere near the level of Natalie and Todd and Jolynn. Um, they're in it every day. Jolynn changes it every day, but we're not comparable, right? So she's changing our data, we're doing our data, but equally, just as active in maintenance. Um, do I feel like we need a separate line for GIS? No, I feel like that's in their job description and you should be paying her comparably for that anyway, so that's how I feel.
So Shawna, just so you know, I know that I need to update from eighty thousand to seventy thousand at the bottom there. And there was a couple more line items.
Um, I have them on mine though, so. Think I'll go.
I I got yours this morning and I was here at six-thirty, but I didn't.
I'm just gonna start at the top, okay? So contract, this year we're at a hundred thousand for um, our managed service provider consolidated. That obviously could change. Um, we originally, our contract went over our budget period. But when we renewed our contract, I asked them if they could um, shorten the contract so that it would end at the end of December, so that it would be easier and. So by the final budget time, we should have an idea from them if they're gonna go up at all on their contract cost for the year. The next two lines, consolidated line and DSL, those are no longer needed, so there's nothing in those amounts. Eagle Recorder Tyler.
But you said you're gonna put the county, you're gonna put the one that says county agent, that's going over to their budget, right?
Yeah, so.
There is no amount?
We're talking, yeah, the consolidated line one and the DSL.
Both of them are done?
Yeah, they're deleted. I talked to Sherry about that.
Okay, officially, okay.
Um, so Eagle Recorder Tyler is the same, Vettor Spec is the same, Wireless for the courthouse is the same. We took the DSL for Richardson to eleven hundred. Um, Watch Guard Maintenance is no longer there. That's um, was the Sheriff's Office software and they've upgraded to new body cameras and I talked to Jesse about it and he said that we could delete that out of there. Um, phone system maintenance, we took it down to two thousand. There's nothing in Zerker software. Um, Zerker annual maintenance stays at twenty-three. I'm gonna skip computers and updates and do that at the end, if that's okay? Um, the T-one line is staying at fifty-four. Server backups is going to forty. Printer hardware and maintenance, so this would be this, it it's actually, it says something different on yours. I think it says county county agent copy machine.
Yep, but we're gonna do.
But we're gonna do um, now change that so that it includes our ABM contract for all the printers and hardware going forward. So that will be at twenty-eight thousand.
The under that, what's under count cone?
Yeah, so forty-five, ten, four-twenty.
We're just gonna use that. That line item and change it to our whole, all of our printers.
And then GIS mapping website, um, we're leaving at twenty-five thousand. Vanguard appraisal is staying at twelve thousand five hundred. Um, the siren line, um, is that on yours? Sorry, I'm trying. So that I'll leave that at the end and kinda discuss that one when we get down to it.
I put it in zero and then put it.
Okay, sounds good. Um, Armor Secure Cloud, twenty-five hundred. Tyler Maintenance is going up to seventy because we added the AR. Portion of that, um, nine-one-one phone system took it down to sixty-eight.
Shawna, the Armor Secure Cloud?
Yep, that's what they use for like sending encrypted messages and um, secure for the um, state's attorney's office. I don't know, do you guys use it, Corey? Okay, so just state's attorney, I think right now might be the only one using that one. I think Consolidated tried to find something comparable to that, but they weren't able to find something that worked as well for them, so we've just maintained that from Armor. Um, county website maintenance uh, is five thousand dollars a year, and then we left the reserve at forty.
Can our our ours county website maintenance is twenty-five hundred, so it's five.
That was for the twenty-twenty-two budget.
Yeah, it's blank. I had to reach out and get the contract from Sherry and this year we paid five. I think it's just five every year, so that's what I put in. So let's jump now back to computers and updates. I put this sheet in front of you guys today. That is what makes up that line item. Um, I get these numbers from our IT provider. And it kinda breaks it out by software and hardware and then it goes into each department and what their needs are gonna be for twenty-twenty-three. Um, as you can see, we're gonna have to replace our wifi. And so we put that in as twelve hundred, or sorry, twelve thousand. And there's a couple other things if you just wanna go down and look. We need a new server for forty-five thousand. And then we just got our normal desktops and laptops that are coming up on our rotation schedule for each department. You guys have any questions on those?
I've got a quick question on that. Shawna, you and I talked previously, um, that Consolidated kinda has you on a, uh, you know.
Four-year schedule?
Could that be dispersed? I haven't seen that. I'm just trying to get.
Absolutely, I'll do that. I'll make a note.
And you know, Commissioner Messer, we are kind of, we're replacing more than we usually do at this point in time because it wasn't done.
Yeah, it was skipped for years, so we had to do two of this last year.
Understood.
Well, actually, this is probably gonna be pretty normal. The updates and everything. So this is probably what we're gonna be expecting.
Yeah, I would say this is about right. It's usually right around thirty something.
And the talk of the. It'll be depending on the talk of the what did they, what would it, well, the last meeting. They're talking about the more secure site.
So I'm gonna put in those updated numbers and stuff like that to you. I just um.
So yeah, the line would be one fifty-nine five hundred.
Yep, and I wrote that in, so and I will be sending these out back out to the commissioners with the changes you guys want.
So was that an email's a more secure thing or what the heck was it?
Instead of Windows and the cloud.
Are you talking about Microsoft Office three-sixty-five?
Yeah, but that's a cost, obviously, per user.
Now, I will say if if we start using Microsoft Office three-sixty-five, wasn't then we could use Adobe through the state too?
Yeah, so it it it's.
But we'd have to change all our email addresses, correct?
Yes, we would then go to the nd.gov.
And there'd be a big cost.
I think it's like twenty-seven grand a year.
Well, yeah, cuz I think it was maybe like twenty-seven dollars per person to change the email and that's per month. And then if we add Adobe over it, another like six or seven dollars, so it gets up there. Okay, so I'm gonna go now to the, do you want me to do the siren line now while we're in here? Okay, so um, this is, I am asking. Due to um, an increase in calls, um, population and just a need for more dispatchers in the dispatch center, that we put in another console into dispatch and as you know, we pay for the equipment. And only part of the salary, so we're responsible for all the equipment and um, software that's on that equipment. I reached out to the state and the quote I got is sixty-eight thousand. I put a five percent buffer on it. I think you guys probably have seventy on yours.
Um, I haven't changed.
It was less than I thought it was gonna be, so I was happy about that. But we're we're just at a point, we used to have a two-person minimum in dispatch, now it's a three-person minimum. And a lot of times there's four people sitting in there. They could definitely use a fifth person on the floor. We've been in exercises where it's just been chaotic in there and we're just at a point in the county where we could use that. So I think it's something that we need right now going forward. So Mike, originally I was putting it on the IT budget, but in our meeting, we kinda had that discussion and thought it would work as an ARPA item because it is a one-time cost, obviously, too.
And that's at seventy?
Yes, and then um, I I would ask if you do, if it's possible, if you could make a decision on that today because there is a lead time for ordering this equipment that can take up to six to eight months, so we won't see that position for a while.
We can, we'll bring that up at the end of the meeting.
Sounds good. Anything else for me? Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, may I? Uh, Karen, I, can you take, you gave me five thousand dollars too much, so I'll give you guys five thousand dollars back, you're welcome. Um, on that canine overtime, see on, see I you on call since you split it up, you can take five thousand off that. Off of one forty-six, you can take five thousand off of that.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, so you didn't realize it was split.
Right.
Between the other one. Okay, let me go back. So you, you added it into the thirty-five thousand?
Yes.
Okay. So is thirty sig?
Yes.
Is that enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Works for me.
Hey, County Road and Bridge, Mr. Heiser.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
If you all remember that last year, we combined. The ten-mil and Special Road and Bridge all into one to make it to, uh. County Road Bridge, I'm still having struggling, guess, cuz we had the ten-mil for so long, but anyway, um. I think uh, on this line item here, we just kinda carried uh, everything across. Our, our biggest, my only question is, we not quite sure how much funding we're gonna get from the state to, to use some of this ten-mil, but that's. That's kinda what we're gonna use it for in these bridge projects, as we get funding, that's where it'll come out of this, this account here. One other question here, Karen, I see in twenty-twenty-two, the small city distribution was zero, now this year it's two-hundred thousand.
Are you talking about for expenses?
Yes.
So, um, the only reason that I, well, one of the reasons why I did that is because we'll have to work through your budget a little bit. Because I, I need what you're proposing for, um, money to match. Your revenue versus expenses in a, in a range, so I move some into gravel and some into. Um, the small cities, if you wanted to do that.
Okay, that's fine, I would just, cuz uh, when we were, when we sat down, we weren't, I know, I don't know if we knew exactly what a mil was worth, so that's why. My numbers were just.
I just got those numbers.
Okay.
Yesterday, so, um, and I will tell you, I know we were having discussions about. Why, um, you know, we budgeted a certain amount, oh wait, it's not this one, it's the next one. Um, when we were talking about budgeting amounts for. Why you hadn't received all your funds yet, but that's, but that's gonna be in your next budget, so.
Okay, so I think for uh, County Road and Bridge, we should be good there. Anybody got any questions? And then we go to County Road Unorganized, um, Karen, this be a question, few down here, I know you just received this, the. The potential Prairie Dog funding we're gonna get. And is that a for sure, this amount?
Um, it's, it, as long as that bucket fills, which. They're saying it will, um, in the spring, we will be getting the, that amount, that's what they sent out. It's an estimated amount.
Okay.
But that was pretty close to the estimated amount.
And then, you know, I put in, pre- twenty-three proposed to transfer from Highway Distribution to million. I see you left that line blank today.
And, and where at to?
Transfer in, under revenues, the, the second and last line item. You know, we transferred two million in twenty-two, we haven't done it yet, we'll, at the end of the year, we'll take whatever we need to. Balance it up, but you didn't carry that over for twenty-three, that line's blank.
Okay, um, the budget that you had dropped off, to me, you actually didn't write that two million in there again, so I wasn't sure, you just had a question mark. I thought maybe we would just look because this one appears to have enough money that's gonna cover.
No, I, I had it in there, but I guess, uh, we should still take that line item across because this is just a potential. From the, from the uh, Prairie Dog. So I think we should still carry that two million over like we did in twenty-two transfer.
Okay, I mean, I can do that, but you're, you'll see in your highway distribution that you might not. Is, we'll talk about that.
Okay, so I still think we should move that over.
Okay.
Because, and then, uh, this, if, if the Prairie Dog funding does come into fruition, you know, that, that's great. But also, when our legislature meets this year, we're gonna try and work on them to actually see if they'll fund. A hundred and seventh and thirty-second to pave it for the Eastern Bypass, so if they don't. And this happens, you know, we could probably use this, I mean, heaven forbid, we got a lot of places we can use this extra funding for. Um, so that's, we'll just, I think if we bring that two million over, we should be okay for County Road.
Okay, the, the state just wants it in your estimate, in the estimated budget that. There's a good chance you'll get that Prairie Dog funding, so I went ahead and just.
That's fine.
Dropped it in there.
Okay.
Um, the other thing that I was gonna tell you is I noticed that on, um. State, with the state aid distribution, obviously, um, that is now monthly. I don't know if you knew that or not, and we, when we had updated those sheets, um, for this year, at the beginning of this year. Um, it increased, you know, I put in an estimate of, uh, three hundred thousand because. Already in twenty-twenty-two, you're gonna keep having money dumping in there. So you'll probably be closer to four hundred thousand by the end of twenty-twenty-two or somewhere in there.
Okay.
Just it, cuz I know we were talking about it, it used to be quarterly and now a lot of those distributions are, are monthly.
Okay. And then for vehicle expense, you know, I just, I bumped that thirty percent and for, um. Fuel another thirty percent, other than that, we're pretty much stayed flat in the rest of the items across, so. There's, the line items, if we run over on one, I know, we, we wanna try and stay close to the line item, if we run over on one, can we use another one that we don't use it from? Um, what I'm getting at is, we're thinking about maybe replacing a motor grader or something, you know, take some off the gravel, put it to the equipment. Cuz I think we got gravel at nine something and equipment at four hundred.
I actually even upped your gravel a little bit because I was trying to get it to even out, I think as long as. I think as long as it's budgeted for that dollar amount and you give me a list of those projects, I think you'll be, you'll be set. Al, for, for the auditors.
Okay, other than that, um, I really don't have any, oh, let me go back to Highway Distribution.
Yep.
Uh, on the very top, there, we got House Bill fifteen oh five, one million dollars were. What's that?
Okay, so in twenty-twenty-two, I'm gonna have to add in that House Bill fifteen oh five, we gave it its own line number. As a revenue into your highway distribution, cuz that's where you told me to put it, and it has to be kept sep- separate for auditing purposes. And then I have an expense line for House Bill fifteen oh five that also has to be added in. I wasn't sure what dollar amount.
That fifteen oh five was like two-point-three million.
That's what I have in your, in your revenue line, and then I just added in some amounts that. Maybe you'll be spending in twenty-three and twenty-two because I wasn't sure how much you plan on.
Well, that, that fifteen oh five will get spent before year end cuz the projects are in progress.
Before twenty-twenty-two is done?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'll take that out and we'll just have to amend the budget to include the higher amount then.
Was there a deadline on fifteen oh five again?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
Got it.
But between them, projects that we're doing, that will use it up.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have any other updates unless somebody has any questions for me.
Oh, that was another thing, Al, with the highway tax distribution, when we were kind of, you were kind of wondering like why it was sitting. Where it's at with one million, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-five-fourteen, it's cuz that payment is also monthly now.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Great, thank you.
On your fuel, Al, I did not realize on your fuel that you um, also cover the weed board fuel, that is not on their budget?
I don't think they budget for fuel or gas or fuel or anything, they've been getting out of our tank forever. I mean, I, I guess if you, if you wanna make sure everybody's budget's in the same. It's not a big deal, but I guess, uh, whatever you guys wanna do.
Um, Travis did send me a message, he's not coming today.
I, I think it would really be good just to kinda keep track what to use for, for, what, you know, like for the rest of the year, just to kinda see.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
And Al, you did add one employee, correct? Cuz I, I know I have to add back in that line item for Shook.
Yes.
So when I, when I, just so the commission knows, when I did the amend, under twenty-twenty-two, you'll see amend budget. That's kind of a list of the amendments that I already have to make cuz there was salary changes, et cetera. So when he, um, when we went through and did the proposed, um. Line at point zero-five, that was going by the, excuse me. That was going by the, um. The new twenty-twenty-two budgeted amount. For the proposed, you know, because I, I used this column, so if this, this person, for example. Elkins was at, uh, well, Janda was at fifty-six, one sixty for this year, he's now at fifty-nine, two eighty. So if you looked at the proposed amount at point zero-five, I did the five percent over the fifty-nine, two eighty. But for all the departments, um, for the proposed five percent, proposed six percent. I went off of the previous budget for twenty-twenty-two, not. What was put in this year, so you know, if you see differences in there. Cuz there's gonna be a couple one, couple of them on here and there's a couple on some other budgets too.
And Gary is supposed to be retiring in September, so that one, that one will actually be back even again.
Who is?
Gary Mayer.
Oh. Okay.
Getting, getting back to the fuel, do, do you run a log when you fill, fill on trucks, you run a log at the?
No, we don't.
Probably the easiest way to know than you, you think we should be at a log?
They don't use any diesel, we just, they use gasoline only, they don't have a diesel vehicle, but. It's, it's probably not a, not a real big issue, I just shouldn't bring it up.
I don't think Jess is coming today, is she?
Who?
She's at home, okay, um, Jess, so I don't think anybody else is here.
I guess on Travis, on the, for the weed board, he just says. He's not gonna make the budget meeting, um. Per my discussion with Karen, the general fund transfer will be, will be to compensate for the retirement, health and FICA. There's changes in addition on the line items to more accurately reflect some of the reoccurring expenses. Additionally, money was put into the new equipment purchases to be used to trade the Gator Inn for a Can-Am. Since the Gator has so many mechanical issues in the past.
Okay, with, um, just so you know, with Travis's, um, on my sheet, I haven't inputted. In the long one, I haven't put it, input what you guys wanna do yet because the very back sheet that you have. Is what the weed board actually approved. And so I don't know if the commission, if, um, do I just put what they approved in there or. How, if you wanted to see other things, I don't know how you guys wanted to follow that, um. Just so you, you know where that was at. And he is looking to add two line items this year, he wants to add sprayer education and testing. And GIS mapping Google Drive.
Does he have any? He didn't have any amounts for that at all?
Yep, they're in there.
No, they're not.
Um, you need to, you need to look at the one that was approved by the board, it's at the end.
Okay.
So the small back page that's at the end of your packets was the one that was approved by the board.
I think we should add fuel or have them or talk to them about adding fuel on there, it would just be nice to track it.
Sure, I agree with you.
I mean, we could probably track it, but I will tell you that, I mean, we're already, last year had to take. And cover their retirement, health and FICA from the general fund on top of their four mills that they get. So that we could make this account out of the red for the year, so, I mean, adding fuel to it isn't gonna. Make it any better, just so you know, I mean, you can track it, but I'm letting you know.
Even if we don't charge them for it, we should track it.
Yeah, it needs to be tracked.
I have no problem tracking it, I guess, how far are you gonna extend this out because. Al, you also send a guy out to the park or the fairgrounds every once in a while too, right? And who, I don't know. The park board?
Weed board.
No, 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 no.
Oh, yeah, we do, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you're, we're, we're using fuel at the park board, right, at the fairgrounds, excuse me. So I mean, I, I agree, it would be a good number to know, I'm just going, how far, you know, if you do it here, then are you gonna keep doing it? And how far down the ladder are you gonna go, that's, that's where I'm at.
No problem.
I think it would be nice to know since we are covering certain ones either because they have trouble making their budget. And making their budget work every year and we don't have other departments that are having this problem.
So what I can do is on these full-size sheets, I can add in, cuz this is kind of just our opening discussions.
Yep.
Um, I can add in what was approved by their board. And then depending on what the discussions are at the end of the meeting, I can add in what you guys are thinking for, for salary or whatever else. And so that you can see both lines and see where they total at, it's just trickier with this one cuz they have their own board. But ultimately, I think the salaries and stuff are up to this board.
Yeah.
So, if you're covering through the general.
I just think maybe if we put fuel on there, maybe there'll be a little bit more due diligence on how they use the fuel. Victim witness, we can just.
So all the, all the rest are people that are not here or, um, they're. Well, pretty much our budgets to decide on, so if you want to start with some of those. You know, we can wait on governing board, cuz I think everybody else is covered, right, that's here? Yeah, okay.
Well, we can get VSO out of the way, right?
Yep, yep, I have a, I have a couple of them, so we can do Veteran Services first if you'd like, certainly. That'll be towards the end of your packets. I think.
Where's the next one in line?
Well, if we went back in line, then we'd be starting over at the governing board. Okay, for the Veterans Service Officer, um, Jess just said that she. Plans on maintaining, um. Her line items, um, I think that overtime, is she, she has salary now was. I'm not sure, but was the overtime, does, um, her, does Wanda use overtime through the Veterans Office?
The only time that I'm aware of is if, uh. One or both of them are out of the office for a period of time that she will call in. Some part-time person to watch the front desk, basically. But, uh.
Well, well, we can, we can double check it too, um. I know Jessica had quite a bit of overtime in twenty-twenty-one, but now that she's salaried, she's exempt from overtime anyways. So I, I don't know if we need that in there or not, but I can, I can double check, cuz she just had me carry over. Um, the line items from last year, um, over to twenty-twenty-three. And so I just put, um, department head five percent, so you could see a five percent, you can see a, a six percent increase. Now, remember that that only applies to the wages. Whatever the department's proposed and said they need for their individual line items, that's obviously the same across, no matter what proposed line you look at. So, um, I do have the retirement Sanford and FICA and everything filled out in there. And her copier software maintenance, we're doing all the, the printers and everything contract. The entire contract is going to be in the IT budget. So that'll, you can see that that's getting moved over to IT. But yeah, there was nothing, nothing crazy on her, so.
So when Billings hitting here in Grant County, they pay us, and then she gets reimbursed for much of those? That's all comes under income, right?
Yes, so it gets paid under, so the veterans office has, if you look over, they have their own revenue accounts and such. It doesn't just get dumped into the general or anything like that. So we get a check for those amounts every year. And then, um, that five thousand is what you guys agreed on based on the, the three, three supporting counties. Yep.
And that money goes into, those three amounts go straight into her? That doesn't go into the general?
No, no.
So is that why, like, her account just keeps on building?
Well, it's, it's not just keeping on building. It's only building because of pretty much those counties. She's come down significantly. I would say that, you know, looking at this, depending where salary goes or what, what you bring in somebody when, when Wanda decides to retire, you're probably going to run through that balance, I would say, six years. And then you'll have to start levying again for veterans. But that's what, that's why that is where it's at.
So I got a quick question, not exclusive to the, uh, VSO. Is there a reason the retirement Sanford Health and FICA are only on the veteran service office, county agent and victim witness?
Yes, so, um, because they're paid, like, veterans service office, because they're paid for out of their own fund or they're levied for separately, weed would normally have theirs on there, too, but we added it into the general. So that is coming out of their, their budget, because they're not general items.
All the others, when it's not on there, is funded through general fund, correct?
Yes, so like E nine one one
Got it.
is also, would normally have it on there, but that's also funded through the general, so. Did you guys have any other questions? I know we kind of.
Because we quit mill, we kept, quit, um, in 2015. Is that when, uh?
I mean, I guess, I don't know the exact year. I know I wasn't here, but yeah, we quit milling for them.
Yeah. That wasn't the question. It was just, so it's clarified. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe we should go ahead and talk about the state's attorney and we can do victim witness, too.
Why don't we do victim witness? Just go through it.
Okay. So I'm still working on the victim witness one a little bit, because we agreed on some of the amounts, but I need to, I put fifty eight to forty in there. I need to figure out if, um, I'm going to do that salary in there at the five percent for Linda. We discussed it. She's going to be retiring next year. So we just budgeted, um, half of her salary, um, to get her through through, you know, the portion of next year that she's going to be here. And then we're going to have a, um, a salary there for the assistant. We do have to amend our 2022 budget for victim witness and add in the assistant. If you look at the balances, I know she previously didn't, she wasn't previously applied for through a grant. We went through that whole thing last year. So it kept eating at her funds, um, that she had maintained extra of. I, so that's why, if you look, you know, that account is technically in the negative. But after discussing things with Amanda, it should technically, I think they said, fund it through the general. And then, um, and then we can put the grant, estimated grant revenue in there, but not, not fully rely on it in case that grant goes away. And I think that's with, I don't think she's wrong about that, so.
As far as I look back, that grant's been going for a long time.
Yeah.
So.
But it's not covering all the costs that it used to. And so no matter what, it would have eventually, it would have been upside down anyways. And so those costs have to be covered through the general, but it's not covering everything. So I'll fill in some more amounts there for you. I just wasn't a hundred percent sure on, I know I have the dollar amount in there for the budget amendment. And so I'll put the five percent and then the, the six percent on there, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure what the commission thought, because no matter what we're going to have to do, we're going to have to amend this budget at the end of the year, which is just, I think we're aware of that, so. I also don't really know how much of a grant she's actually going to get, because she's not going to know that until, until it's awarded, so.
But she did apply?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we want to go to county jail?
Well, can we do state's attorney? Because that's kind of part of the victim witness one. State's attorney, and just get that one out of the way. So with the state's attorney, I'm also going to have to add in, you know, 2022 budget amendments with salaries. And that'll have to be approved, um, as far, you know, for the salary amount. So I wanted to make it fair throughout, so if you look at, the 2023 proposed department head, um, line, you know, those, uh, five percent raises are based on their current, higher salary, because both, um, Amy, both of the second and the third state's attorneys were actually bumped to a hundred and five thousand dollars this year. That's what they were brought in on. And, and so the hundred and ten to fifty reflects, you know, a five percent on the, the hundred and five thousand raise-wise. Whereas if you look at your five and six percent columns, and her budget actually isn't going to be over at the end of the year, as far as I know. I think she's going to be fine. This is just as regards to next year, so that you guys are aware.
I was going to say, we don't need to do an adjustment. We've, we've already accounted for that. When, when Pete was hired, we already made that adjustment, so.
Yep, we made the adjustment, but I'm talking for next year because of the, the line item difference. I have the five percent and the six percent. That's reflecting if it would have been at, based on the 2022 budgeted amount. But those line items have already been adjusted to a hundred and five, so you're better off probably going off of the, um, proposed department head one, because, I mean, you can't make them go backwards, so.
Yeah, because the line items were already adjusted, so we just go off the hundred and five anyway, because that, that's not what they're making.
Right, they're, they're at a hundred and five right now.
Yep.
And so that amount right there, that one ten to fifty, is at a five percent increase. I just know that in everybody else's, I went off of, um, the, the actual budget from the previous year. Because one of her line items down here, she's actually, you know, she didn't use it all up, because she didn't have a third state's attorney for, what, six months? And so she's not going to be over budget this year. We just have to account for the higher wages in, in the next.
So how come they got bumped up to a hundred and five right away?
I'll, I'll take that. So, first of all, I want to clarify that, make sure that the salary of the state's attorney's office is going to be within the confines of the budget for 2022. That, that's point number one, so that we're clear on that. Number two is when they advertised, or when Amanda advertised for the third assistant, we had budgeted last year, correct me if I'm wrong, eighty thousand.
Mm-hmm, eighty thousand.
Okay, advertised it for an extended period of time, didn't get any applications. Finally got an application, and that individual wanted thirty percent more than the eighty thousand to, uh, come to, uh, work. That was declined. And Pete has come on board. He was boarded, um, as if it was a one oh five salary prorated. And so in order to do that, then you needed to take Amy, once she came back from maternity leave, to that same level, so that you treated both the second and third assistant, um, equally. And that's basically the market for attorneys or state's attorneys. If you look at the, the sheet that, Juata would put together and the surveys, it's, it's just, it's, uh, it's tough to recruit state attorneys, because in the private sector, they can definitely make a whole lot more money. And so that's the reason for the adjustment. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Didn't they just get hired on, and then he get hired on, and then Amy got this, too?
So it was adjusted when she came back from maternity leave to his, to the number that he was hired at. Because that wouldn't have been fair. She was here longer than, than Pete. And for her to be, uh, earning less, um, wouldn't have been fair to that position.
So do we eliminate those two with the raise, since they got one this year, and, I mean, such a huge amount? I mean, we had so much money budgeted.
We're within the budget. I, I, I think we need to reiterate that. What you do with raises is, is up to you, but I think it would be a mistake to, um, not offer a compensation package equivalent to the, to the rest of the staff, so.
I did, I did say that she's going to be within her budgeted line item for 2022. It just really affects where you guys are going with, with 2020.
Just wanted to clarify that, because it was a little misleading, so.
So if you look at the, the column where it says proposed department head, you guys can go ahead and write a little five percent there, because that's what that would look like if you went off what they are at currently, at five percent.
So the fact it didn't get brought to the board, so everybody knew, I mean, I realize this, but, so everybody knew is, it didn't come to a vote because it was already within her budget, correct?
Yes, her bottom line number for 2022, she is not going over. Neil wanted to make everybody aware that they would see an increase, though, in 2023, because she was under budget for 2022. She accommodated getting these lawyers in. But in 2023, we have to accommodate for them being there, so that was the.
Okay, um, what do we want to go next? County jail?
Yeah, we can do county jail. The county jail, I, I filled in, um, what I'm using for estimate tax statements of what the general property tax would be. I also filled in, you know, my estimate for mobile, mobile homes penalty and interest. Um, we currently don't have any money going to state, um, to the county jail for state aid distribution. Homestead credit, I estimate telecommunications, it's the same. So down at the, at the bottom, I do not think I have received their budget yet. The budgets aren't due until the 10th. So it actually gives me, like, a week window to determine everybody's levies. So I just put in an estimated amount there. That's why it's highlighted. I just went ahead and put, um, two million dollars there, because I'm guessing that their budget's probably going to be in that range. Alcohol, drug tests, I just put in five hundred. Sunrise Youth, Youth Bureau, we give them one mil, um, one mil worth. And so that's two hundred and twelve thousand, two thirty, one thirty is my estimate for the mills, uh, mil worth for tax statements, so. And we'll go over that here in a little bit. And then I moved over the Southwest Multi Corrections contribution to this, because we do have a considerable balance. And we had been paying out the Southwest Multi Corrections contribution. That's basically what they need for extra funding at the end of the year. We had been paying that out of our, um, capital improvements line, our capital improvements budget. And I moved it over here, because it just makes more sense. And this, um, and we do have a balance, so. Court cases, um, I just, I mean, alls we can do is estimate that. I'm assuming Amanda will be busy. JPA, paramedic, I have not received what that cost is going to be yet. That's why I put it at forty thousand, because that's a joint powers agreement. And yeah, that's that in.
That Southwest contribution, they were getting that, what, six thousand a month, but that was for the building maintenance? That wasn't for their?
No, so, so the Southwest Multi Corrections, um, the building maintenance is actually separate. This is basically what we have to account for of them being underfunded over budget at the end of the year. So out of that same line, if you pull your capital improvements budget, you can see in 2021, we paid out, you know, because we were beyond, um, we had to pay out two hundred and forty-five thousand, one seventy-two, thirty-one. That's written on there, under capital improvements, because that's that line item. 2022, we budgeted having to pay out up to an extra four hundred thousand dollars. So we won't know until the end of the year what that actual amount is. I moved that Southwest Multi Corrections contribution line over to county jail, because we have other things coming up that are coming out of capital improvements, and we have a fund under county jail. And honestly, it's, it's more, um, it's a capital projects levy, but it, county jail, it's labeled county jail. All the other jail stuff comes out of there. I think it just, it makes sense to be under there. So then we can go ahead and go over the capital improvements budget, if you would like. I will have a dollar amount, um, for oil and gas. Obviously, you know, I, so basically, the oil and gas used to go directly into this capital improvements account, and it's supposed to go into the general. And last year, when we had these discussions, we agreed that at the end of the year, what was not used out of the oil and gas money, we would transfer over to the capital improvements account. So with that being said, you know, I have transfer in from general, twelve, twenty twenty-two, a million dollars, you know, because I'm just estimating. We, we don't know that amount. For the proposed, I know that we have capital improvements coming up, obviously. I did budget in the 2022 for this balance to come out for county jail. But if you look at that balance number that I have at the bottom, there is some stuff that still needs to come out of there, um, as far as, if there's anything with the, the social service building or, you know, the contribution. That's really it. That's all really that's left to come out of there, or if the courthouse.
Oh, we're going to have to move that courthouse number significantly.
Yes, so that's why I'm coming to the commission with, especially this one, is, um, so. Yes. So that's why I'm coming to the commission with especially this one is so I will need, this one isn't an emergency because it's not on our estimated tax statements. So I mean, we can even do this at the final budget hearing, you know.
So like the HVAC system that we're.
That's where I wanted to come out of.
You want it in here?
Yes.
Okay, do you want a number estimate?
Sure.
One one? Okay. Put one point two in there in the middle, please.
Okay. I didn't know if there was any other capital improvements that we know of that are coming up in twenty twenty three, so.
One point two million for the courthouse for the for the system?
For the to redo it.
And then that will eliminate the boiler and everything or?
No.
Well, no, the boilers, the heat.
Yeah, so I mean, we're looking at three options.
You said one point three or one point two?
Well, I mean, we're going off engineers' estimates at this point.
So one point two.
Most expensive option. We have three options in front of us that they are researching and going to try to develop plans that we can bid. And then at that point, we can make a decision, but I'd rather us budget high number so that if we use anything less, then we don't have to make an adjustment.
Okay, because then I'll just write that on as the project that is being budgeted for. Was there anything else that you guys could think of that needed capital improvement budget?
Those are the front steps. I think we have money for that in our budget.
That'll be this fall? Okay, so in twenty twenty three, the biggest thing is the HVAC, correct? Okay, so I will at least add that in there. I think that that's appropriate for.
What did we usually give to the Richardson Health Center? Because now if that's purchased, if that works out, we're purchased.
And we can, we're going to go through the contributions list and everything, probably at the next commission meeting, because that's kind of.
That was on the contribution side?
Separate, yes, that's on the contribution side. And I want to give you guys plenty of time to look through stuff that we have individually. Okay, so did you want to do the LEC maintenance one? Get that one out of the way?
Can we take five, please? And then we can come back to do that. Four ten.
Do we go over the county agent one real quick?
Can go over the county agent?
Obviously Kurt is not here today. He's at the fair, so what I did with this is I, he didn't actually put that it was department head proposed eight percent varied. But when I looked at it, it was different percentages. So I just put eight percent varied because two of them were eight percent, two of them were less. On and then I, of course, have the five percent and the six percent as an option. I know that with his, the all the copier maintenance agreements are moving over to IT. His was actually currently in IT, so there we're turning that line completely into IT. The other thing I will say is that I don't think he really had anything else. There was nothing else in specific. The money that he gets into the county agent account is listed up above, you know, that telecommunications tax, Billings County share. And that's pretty much all he has left for what he receives into the county agent one.
Do we know if that Billings County share is going to go up or it just stays at twenty two usually?
Twenty two percent is, I think, what was the agreed amount. I don't, I put this number in here because that's what Kurt had. I'm guessing he got that from Billings County, but I'm sure Marshall will send me something to to supplement, you know, something else to supplement that if it is supplemented, but twenty two percent is where that seemed to be, so. And then, of course, there, like Neil was saying, their retired retirement Sanford and FICA is all covered under this budget too. That's not out of the general fund. For for the two. Now, we don't cover the county agent and the FCW agent. We don't we don't cover their retirement or their FICA.
So on the travel, the postage, everything that kind of went up, that's just all estimated or?
About the same.
Because it didn't, it it's the same from twenty twenty two. If you look that twenty nine eighty four, that's only for half a year.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
Okay.
And then we have a few more. Do you want to do the LEC maintenance one? Oh, I think that's one we were going to do before we went on break.
You can start.
Okay, so for the LEC maintenance, this what was proposed and approved through our LEC board. Basically, you know, we have insurance and everything. I think the biggest significant thing you will see is under capital improvements. We are not contributing seventy two thousand this year. I think that's where you came with your
Yes.
Your six thousand. We are not contributing seventy two thousand because after discussions, we agreed that we could, it it wasn't needed for this coming year. And it wasn't on their budget either for that seventy two thousand. The dispatcher line, I'm assuming. I'm assuming because I think this is, and I know a part of it comes out of Shauna's. For for the two oh four is what I had last year. So I will probably have to add in the the two oh four because this is another portion, you know, this is another budget where the dispatchers is. But that's not part of the budget that they send over to me. So. So you'll have to add probably about two oh four onto that total expense out of the LEC maintenance, just so you know.
I have a quick question and maybe Commissioner Xander can answer it for me in that regard. The custodial payroll line and that is that one position, a position, a position and a half? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yes, and there's some contract cleaning services.
And that's all in there?
It sure should be.
Yeah, so it's a total of multiple custodial pay line items. That's the total. And that's how they they do their budget sheet. So. But I do have the breakdown of the commission would like to see that. The budget that was approved and sent over. This is just a total for that line item. Was there any other questions about that one?
So did that seven thousand dollars a month get sent go to some other budget or did that just get eliminated then?
I just took it out so far.
Took it out.
Yep. So for the next one, if you guys didn't have any more questions, did you want to do the emergency?
Sure.
The emergency budget. So currently we aren't levying any tax dollars. This is why I left this open because I I don't know what you guys want to do. We are not levying any tax dollars for emergency emergency fund. The only thing that we did is we do put some of our state aid distribution into there. You know, and that's a percentage every month and telecommunications tax, but we're not levying anything for it. That's the balance as of right now. And we we don't have anything scheduled to to come out of that. So.
What, if you don't mind Karen or maybe Shawna can help me here. What this this emergency budget in in? Where would that be applied? Can you give me an example?
Yeah, so like when we did the snow emergency and we had the declaration, that declaration would warrant us to open up use to the emergency fund. For instance, like all of the contractors or any extra overtime, technically Al could have charged that to the emergency fund instead of taking it out of his own budget.
So it's just kind of an emergency contingency fund. I think that balance is sufficient for right now. I don't think we need a levy.
Balances. I haven't seen it. So what is?
Five hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-two.
I don't think we need more money in there.
No, that's fine.
So.
So does there have to be a declaration or something special to be able to access this money?
Yes.
Didn't you have, you had Carla?
She did the declaration.
Yeah.
Yep. And is there a certain amount that has to be in here?
That I am, I would have to verify. I'm not sure.
And I can check that under my budgeting laws if there is supposed to be a certain amount. But I I don't think it's an issue. If anything, we haven't levied for in a in a few years now because it's kind of just sitting at its balance.
Yeah, I think it's just smart to relook at it every year. Obviously, we start dipping into it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Okay, lastly, just to get through the rest of the budgets, I have my own auditor budget. And then I have the election budget. So on my auditor budget, I told you I kind of did with all the budgets. If there if there was a different line in the twenty-twenty-two, whatever that budgeted amount was in twenty-twenty-two, I carried over, you know, the five percent as far as wage wise goes into the five and six percent. But the department head one is going to be where you're going to see variances on that because, you know, I would propose, obviously, I I have my deputy auditor doing payroll. So I I don't need another person. I'm also taking the consulting wages out and and then I am looking to add in a training line. And what that training line is for, you'll see it towards the bottom of the sheet, is some of the classes and stuff that I would like my staff to take next year and an off election year that relates to their jobs with Tyler Technologies, our specific software. There's some accounts receivable classes. There's some, and they're done all on their computer and online. But accounts receivable, there's accounts payable one, and there's a general ledger one that I would like to take. So I put in a dollar amount in there because I just want to, you know, get things clean and accurate. And and I just, that's that's what that would be there for. I did increase my travel budget a little bit because I obviously travel a little bit more. If you notice, the costs aren't as high so far in twenty-twenty-two because I'm also working with my elections travel budget. So it's kind of both of them. It's election related. I put it over in the election side. If it's just auditor office related, I keep it in the auditor side. But I do know that our conference for the auditor and treasures will it looks like it's going to be up by Canada this coming year. So I want to accommodate for that. And I also have Lana accompanying me to the bigger conferences and such, which has been great. Because when we go to things like the auditor treasure, it's just a huge amount of information. And we're able to reason through things and have somebody else listening to it as well. And and I really appreciate that. So.
So is consulting that was like for Lynn? Lynn, do you still use her at all?
No. So as twenty-six, you see twenty-six seventy-seven fifty was spent of the twelve thousand five hundred. I had budgeted for Lynn. That was used to help with the redistricting when we had to do those maps with emergency management. But it's, but we're good and I we won't be needing her next year. So I don't think we'll even, I mean, we won't be using any more of that this year. So.
So that the we can, you've pulled it out in your numbers and obviously the the last two columns, it could be eliminated as well, correct?
Yes, it could be eliminated in the last two columns. I just went by everybody's budgets. I just took whatever wages and added to them. Was there any questions about that one?
So the thirteen one twenty-five or the thirteen two fifty, that can be removed, right?
Yep, I plan on taking that out. Yep. And then I also plan on, I know I have a part-time, that's also a salary. Because, you know, I just did it off the salaries. I also plan on decreasing what we need for part-time tax mailing. And that's when the estimated tax and the final tax statements go out. I don't need as much in there. And then this last year, you know, we have in our budget for part-time. We also budgeted somebody coming in and helping when people are paying their taxes, just entering tax amounts, checks and stuff. But after discussions with Lana and my office staff, we're pretty much have that under control. So we don't plan on having a part-time person needing to come in for that. So the next one I have is election budget. Obviously, elections is is quite a beast this year. And right now you can see as of eight-three. But I can tell you that we got a surprise, another probably about nine thousand bills that are going to be paid in the September meeting. So that was a significant cost for for a primary election. I spoke with the state about their billing because they they choose, you know, we are the ones that pay the bills, but they are the ones that chose the original vendors for those. And I said, it's really hard to budget for because we don't know what they're going to charge anything. And we don't know how to hold them accountable because we don't know what the original agreements were. And then they also wanted the election costs so that they could publish on their website what the cost per vote was. Well, then one of the companies billed us more costs a few weeks later. And so that wasn't even included in the in the state report. Realistically, this last election, you know, what was submitted to the state, it came out to ten dollars and like forty-two cents a vote. I know that if we add in the extra nine thousand dollars in invoices that we received after those costs had to be submitted, we're probably more looking at eleven something a vote. So if not a little bit more. We do have JPA agreements with the the schools and the cities for some reimbursement since, you know, we're doing all of the the work per se, as far as that goes. But those need to be reevaluated. Most of them are ten years old. And I think Dickinson's has been redone, but I know like for having the school board stuff, you know, we only bill the schools two hundred dollars a piece for having all their school boards on our ballots. We also cities, I mean, that's up to the commission. We might just have to look at that. You know, it hasn't been updated in ten years. I I want to say the small cities pay like one percent of the cost of the election. So I did send those invoices to the state and I told them, you know, this needs to be looked at because we don't know what the agreements are. And we don't know, because they're the ones that have the agreement with the vendors and they just send us the invoices. And so when I go in and order ballots, it's kind of a surprise. And I really don't appreciate surprises. So just so you guys have a heads up. In the twenty-twenty-three proposed, I just left a little bit in this budget because obviously it's an election year. There might be some maintenance that they come through our machines. And miscellaneous is if I need to change out some posters and stuff like that to get ready for the presidential election. So that'll just be five thousand dollars this year. Next year, I should say. Excuse me.
Any questions?
Okay, before you guys go into your discussions, I just wanted to give you a few more numbers so you kind of know what we're looking at here. Our mills for this last year, you know, were worth about, I think, what'd we say, two hundred and two hundred and two, two thousand something range. For my estimated tax statements, we have one mill for the county is worth estimated two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents. So we had about a ten thousand increase because of the property value changes. If we kept our general mill, now this is speaking to the general. If we kept that at thirty-one point one-two like it was last year. It dollar wise, it's a in the increase of about two hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents of revenue difference.
Say that number again.
Two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety, oh, sorry, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents. So I just wanted you guys to where if if that mill stayed at that same amount. One thing we did not so much account for this year is obviously we do have some overages. But with the budget, and I will be giving you guys fun balances with the final budget sheets that you get to stare at for a while. We did receive a significant amount, not a significant, but quite a bit more than the previous year of oil and gas revenue this year. And that's going into the general right now. And so and that comes monthly, just so that you guys are aware. So that's kind of balance. It not only balances it, but you know, that does account for, we were going to transfer whatever was left over of the oil and gas at the end of the year over into capital improvements. But just so you know, that that number of revenue is quite a bit significant this year. The downside is we we never really know what that's going to be. So it just depends. Well, I I don't, it's different every month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what is it? I mean, what is the estimate or the average of it?
I guess I haven't done an average, but you know, we do have a different, we have these different sources. And I actually found another one that you guys may want to update, kind of like we did with the state aid distribution, because this is separate. Oil and gas are new state aid distribution. There's another one that you guys might want to look at that's never been changed. So and I can get to the total of where we're, what we got so far this year. But it goes straight into the general as of right now because it's supposed to hit the general first. Currently, balance wise, as of, and I had them run it as of I actually had Lana run it this morning. Did you run it as of June thirtieth, right? You ran it as of today. Okay, so as of no, because I'm going to have to take out
Okay.
like re redo it. I just wanted you guys to kind of know where we we were sitting. So as of today, we're currently for the general at a fund balance of about twenty-three million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-four cents.
Say that again, please. I'm sorry.
Twenty-three million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. You can pretty much guarantee that ninety-something percent of property taxes have been collected. So I we're probably not going to have any more revenue wise other than the oil and gas and such. This does include, that's all the one thousand numbers. Everybody else, you know, has separate things. And this does have to make us through the the rest of the year. And that also includes our CDs.
It includes the CDs?
Yep. Okay, so that's what I wanted to let the commission know so you could kind of see where that's at.
It would be nice, you know, with making some decisions on raises and stuff to get just that estimated monthly that's going in.
For the only thing is, is you don't, like for this coming year, we could probably, you don't necessarily want to count on the oil and gas when you're doing raises.
No.
So I can estimate all I want, but if if gas prices, if that those permitting go down in gas prices, the cost per barrel goes down, I mean, we could, out of nowhere, we could get cut in half.
Yeah.
So I really just. So I really just don't want to necessarily depend on that.
No.
Okay, so that's what I had, just so you guys were aware before you started discussions.
Would we like to start with discussions? I guess the first page was the healthcare. I was looking into that a little, or thinking on that a little bit with the raises. I know a lot of counties are, a lot of counties are a hundred percent with their healthcare.
So question. If we went five percent across the board, what would that cost us? Total, for a year?
About three hundred and eleven thousand.
I was gonna say, I didn't print that email that I sent. Did you have that email on you, Neil?
If we went down versus if we decided to go a hundred percent full coverage, we'd be less money.
The five percent portion, excuse me, based on last year's number, would move up wages only three hundred and eleven thousand, not the benefits package.
But not, yeah.
The only thing that, a couple of things just to keep in mind though, if you are going off of this current health insurance cost, is you also do have to account for the people that if we're covering a hundred percent of insurance, you do have to account for the people that are going to switch. Well, that they might switch from their current plan. And me and Joetta have kind of went over this. If they have, yes. So we will have an increase in enrollment, so this number will obviously be higher.
How many people do we have enrolled?
So we have about twenty-two people that waive our insurance. And with about ninety-four full-time, you know, there's probably seventy. That seems like a lot. Maybe my numbers, oh, I can get it for you.
I mean, you have,
I know how many waive.
I mean, right here, you have state counties total, but that would be for how many people?
I went off of, when I sent this out was kind of, I would say, in the middle of last year, last summer. And so that was based on how many people we had on it at that time, because the cost is the same.
And the other thing that we're doing for due diligence is we're getting quotes from three different brokers too. So, you know, one thing with the state plan is all that they offer is family or single. And so what we can do with these brokers is get quotes for like an employee and spouse, an employee and children, and then have the single and the family plan.
I know I brought that up once.
Yeah, and that, and that could save, you know, the county and our employees, you know, however we break it up, money. So, so we're looking into that.
What they would offer would be equivalent to what the state offers as far as,
We're waiting for those quotes. I should have them within the next couple of weeks, you know? And that's what, you don't know, you know, is the premium, what the premiums are going to end up being.
I was talking so much to premium, but I was talking about what they cover, would that be pretty good?
Oh, you know, we're looking at plans that would almost mimic the state plan we're in now.
And that's what Billings County does, right?
Bill, what, does what?
They have the different health.
They have a different health plan, but, and it's something that me and Lana looked into at our conference and it's something we were going to kind of look at next year if we wanted to go that option. But they go with that co-op. That, and it's Blue Cross and Blue Shields is what it is. But it's a co-op of a bunch of,
Local government.
Yes. That's what they're using.
A lot of schools.
But they have, we have to, if we were going to do something like that, we as a county would have to apply, we would have to be accepted into the co-op. And because we might not be accepted into co-op, they look at how much, how much is actually spent on your health insurance side, which could be scary. Be accepted into the co-op and then you have to agree to it for so many years because you can't just pull out. So there is strings attached with the co-op too. But that would be currently Blue Cross and Blue Shield if we decide to go that route.
So I'm sure there'd be, once they would accept us, there'd be like a month's waiting time before they could get transferred over or would they accept right away? And what about somebody that is using the insurance at this point for medical situation? Would they be able to transfer it over?
Well, I know that there's a current cost involved, like right out the gate. You have to pay so much upfront to get into the co-op. Is that the way you understood it, Lana?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, I think Joetta has actually contacted them and is, we're waiting on it for them to,
Yeah.
Yeah, and typically, if they accept us or we accept them, you know, we are getting three different proposals. And it might, we might find that we're better off just staying with what we have. So what we would do then is it would be effective January first, 2023. So we wouldn't renew with this, you know, the state plan. And we would renew with a new vendor. So I think what,
January first, 2023, like in six months from now?
Yeah, because they do, they do like in the middle of the year.
Because we have to let the state know whether we're going to renew with them, you know, here, usually October. So.
Yeah.
So that'd be, I'm glad you're looking into the different options. Because like I said, we've looked at like single plus one and these type of stuff. And since the state didn't offer it, we just keep looking.
Right, yeah.
Because that's such a huge jump.
Yep.
So that's, that's why I kind of brought this sheet back up because our rates are usually, what are they, good for like two years? And so in 2023, you will see an increase. We just don't know what that increase is yet. But at least this gives you an idea of what you'd be looking at with what we currently have. And if you look, right now, we currently have a seventy-five, twenty-five policy. So the county pays seventy-five, the employee pays twenty-five. The options below would be if we, you know, if we did an employee twenty percent county, eighty percent. And then I put a hundred percent option if the county wanted to do that. We could also do a ninety, ninety-ten option. I mean, there's other options, just so you can kind of see where that was at.
I guess with the department heads, if they're, if, when hiring, if they see that, when someone applies like a, say, of a ninety-ten, does that affect, will that affect them applying and everything? Other than looking at the number of, when they get hired, of what their salary would be?
Well, I mean, typically, when someone, when we're recruiting, we don't have that sort of thing out there. They have no idea how much our premiums cost. So it's when you make a job offer and then they start looking into your benefits, you know? And then they kind of compare with maybe what they're paying now with what, you know, you can offer. And then there's, you know, sometimes they look at their spouses. And so sometimes it depends. For benefits are a big deal, just depends what, you know, their situation. For some, but others, it's not as important because maybe they already get it through a spouse or something too. For some, it's cheaper. You know, I was, I was pretty excited when I came and, you know, the county paid that much because I was used to a different, in the private sector, you usually pay for a lot more things, you know? So just depends where you're coming from too.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my, my comment on the insurance thing, I think it's great information. I agree with Bernie on this. Anytime you make an adjustment to the allocation to the, or cost share of the insurance, it's a number that we don't control because we don't know where the insurance is going to go in January twenty-three or when the next policy comes out. So my preference would, and if it goes up and we're still at seventy-five percent, we still have an increased cost, so don't get me wrong. My preference would be to deal on the wage side because that's a number we can, we can control much better. And what that number is or what that discussion is, I certainly would want to partake in that, whatever, you know, the consensus of the group is. But I get concerned when we start talking about increasing this because I don't think we've had a recruitment tool problem based on paying seventy-five percent, kind of like what Joetta said. We do have a very good benefit package to include the retirement as well. So I guess that's, that's my comment. And I'm willing to have further discussions on, on any of the options we've talked about.
I agree with you on that, in the same respect as an employee, if I'm looking at it. I would rather have the higher medical provided to me than the raise at this point.
I'm sure there are some think of that. And we also have to look at the twenty-two exemptions we have. There's no benefit to them.
How do we take that into consideration?
Yeah, so then they're not the,
Are we taking into consideration now with the seventy-five percent? I mean, are they compensated at all for the seventy-five percent because they're not getting medical?
No.
So then.
There are laws around that too. You can't, you can't pay people for not taking your benefits. So you have to be careful when you get into that too, so.
In addition to Neil's remarks, a salary increase not only affects your salary part of it, but it affects the cost of the county-provided retirement money significantly. So you need to weigh in on that, I believe. There's also, I think, looking at these budgets say that that there's a legitimate reason to look at some salary adjustments. And I just looked at a couple of them here a bit ago again. Department heads that in my mind are below market value, if that's the right word, comparing what, what, maybe market value is not the right word, but the comparing, comparing some department head base salaries to other department heads are, are out of balance in my mind. And, you know, I'm just saying, I think that, that stuff needs to be looked at as well. Our governing, governing board budget, we're not going to look at that?
I think it has to be looked at.
Yeah, my first thought is eliminate pay raises for county commissioners. That's an easy one, that's a,
Really easy now that you're done.
That's what I was saying.
Really easy now that you're done.
And you're running for reelection.
Yeah. I didn't want my raise last year, so I mean, I don't,
I put governing, I wrote this down last week, governing board zero, question mark. I think it's got to be discussed. Well, so, I mean, we have to do something to move forward with the discussion.
I'll finish in a second here, but I think it sends the right signal. You know, there was, a couple of months ago, there was a lot of conversation about is elected official an employee? And are we entitled to benefits? If, I'm sure many of you recall that conversation. And we came to some resolution on the longevity end of it, and I'm fine with that. But I think of myself now, because I don't believe I'm an employee, I believe that I'm independent contractor, so to speak. I'm elected. And so I think we should eliminate the county retirement from the commissioner's budgets as well.
I don't agree.
Pardon me?
I do not agree with that. I mean, I, the retirement part, I mean, you want to do the raises.
Well,
I mean, yes, we're all elected officials. All of us here are elected, sheriff's elected, state's attorney.
Are you an employee or aren't you?
No, I'm elected official.
Then you're not entitled to retirement benefits.
The state's attorney and the sheriff is not either?
And I'll recall, Mr. Marsh made a comment, one that I took heart in, that we're not in this for the money.
We're not making our livelihoods like the state's attorney and the sheriff is.
Exactly. So if we're not in it for the money, fifteen percent of your, goes into your retirement account.
Have you taken retirement your whole time? Now that you're quitting, have you, you have retirement every year? I mean, do you have a retirement in here for the last twenty-two years?
Unless you decide to take it away from me.
So it's actually all elected officials get retirement automatically. They can waive it if they would like to, but they get it.
We can waive it as a board.
What's that?
The board has the decision power to waive it.
I do not believe so.
Well, we don't have a state's attorney to rule on it, so, but. And I'm not so sure that we shouldn't include elected officials in all of this.
Ken, I will say that I, I think if you try to take the three other elected officials, myself, the state's attorney and the sheriff, if you try to take our retirement, et cetera, away, you might not have anybody to be in those positions, so.
I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not terribly serious about that, believe me.
And then don't throw it out there.
Okay, moving forward.
Let's just move forward.
Moving forward to get the discussion going. I have two points I would like to make. So there's three proposals that I've heard that are on the, on the discussion desk. One would be a small salary increase, two percent. And in that package would be to take the coverage for health insurance cost from seventy-five to ninety percent and pay a one-time COLA adjustment of seven hundred and fifty dollars per employee for a full-time employee. The second proposal that is out there is one I made the other day for discussion, which would be a five percent salary increase and a fifteen hundred dollar COLA one-time payment per employee. And the third one that I've had brought to me would be a four percent increase and a two thousand dollar single COLA payment per employee. The, based on my simple math, based on the email that Karen sent me, the cost without benefits of the first one I mentioned would be about four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in gross cost. And if you would take seventy-five thousand, provided we would all agree, and potentially take seventy-five thousand of that, which would be the seven hundred and fifty dollar COLA payment out of ARPA, the total cost would be about three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to the budget plus benefits. The five percent option would be about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, of which one fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand of that could come out of ARPA if we agree. And the four percent plus two thousand option would be four hundred and fifty thousand, of which two hundred thousand could come out of ARPA if we agree.
So what was that bottom, that first one was four seventy-three minus, oh, minus, okay, four hundred, okay.
Yeah, it'd be about three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So I guess what I'd like to do to move this forward is, are there any other proposals that people have? And if not, let's chew on those three and make one that works. And if not, let's chew on those three and make one that works.
My feeling is this is ARPA or the CARE funds. I know we never, we haven't done anything for the employees with that. I know we bought some equipment, but nothing's come out of the employees, but I think we definitely should go with a five percent. And I'm thinking of that, ARPA or CARE fund is twenty-five hundred dollar per employee.
If I were an employee, I'd probably like the first, first option. Where we give them seventy-five percent of their, no.
Ninety, ninety.
Ninety percent of their insurance. That's only two percent, two percent raise.
We could do the numbers on that one and even go to look at a three percent with the night, but I mean, that's a, on the health insurance, that's the, that's a fifteen percent hike on the health insurance. It's like, I think that's a pretty good deal.
But it's one of those, they're not having to pay anymore, so it's like a raise even though they don't see it on their check.
And, I mean, we have to realize, and I agree, the COLA with all these extras, I mean, it's inflation. I think all the county employees deserve it, but we also have to look on the private sector side. Neil, are you going to give COLA? Are you going to give any payments to you on the private sector?
I haven't decided yet, I don't know what we're going to do.
I mean, I've talked to other people that have private businesses too, and, and they suffer as a owner on the business side. So we just, I'm not saying not do it, but we just have to take in consideration to where we're doing it and, which I think, I mean, our employees deserve, and there is inflation, but we just have to remember that the taxpayers are there that aren't getting it.
First of all, it's not coming out of taxpayer money.
You're right, well, it's-
Well, it's, where it came from, federal government, pay federal tax, I mean, it's taxes.
It does, I agree that way, but, and the fact is that-
Well, that COLA or, or, I mean, I should say that the CAREs or ARPA or whatever you want to get, that was sent to compensate, so we retain employees too. I mean, that was part of the, too, when the federal government agreed to that.
Yeah.
And the employees we have, we have a lot of good employees, they're, we're lucky to have them and they're lucky to have us, and so if that money's there to help them out, I think we should use it.
And outside of the, the CAREs or ARPA or whatever, I mean, we've, we've done a good job of retaining employees over the past two years, right?
Yes, yes, we have.
So that, that to, to me is, is a little less influential. If I, just to make a comment on Dean's suggestion of the five percent plus a twenty-five hundred dollar payment, that just about hits nine percent. Raise or however you want to call it, additional compensation for the employee that's in that fifty-five to fifty-five thousand dollar range, so that's about eight point nine. The other ones aren't quite there. The one I threw out, like I said the other day, was about eight point four percent.
And which one was that, Neil?
Which one, the-
The four percent and two thousand?
Okay, repeat your question, I got too many numbers written down.
Said the one you threw out the other day.
Okay, five percent plus the fifteen hundred is about eight point four percent. I agree, there has to be this number that nobody's happy with, that the taxpayer doesn't like, that the employer doesn't like, and that's probably the fairest deal.
But a benefit to our taxpayers are the employees that we have.
Yes, I agree. We, we, we do have a good overall, very good dedicated employees. So what is the sweet spot? Where are we comfortable, where we're saying we're doing our job as a governing board and we're also being fair to the employee staff?
And the stewardship to the county, yeah.
And I agree with the county employees. I mean, we have great county employees. I mean, I think our county is being, is being run very, very well right now. That's just the comments I get on the other side.
Looking back, years back, I know we, we never really kept up with the cost of living on that, and I think this is the way, the way that my proposal is to kind of get us at least close to where we should be.
And you were at the dean, that was the five percent and the twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Does anybody know kind of where the city of Dickinson is lying? I know they put out a paper, I know, but they just had a meeting, right? Does anybody know where they're-
I don't think they've made a decision.
They're up in the air also.
But it's important to remind, remember that the city has already made it one time, ARPA payment to their employees last year, so I think that would be part of the equation because I think they're going to be probably a little less than several of the ones we're looking at, but they already made it a, a payment to, to employees too, so.
They made an ARPA payment in the middle of the year?
No, last winter.
Yeah, sometime, it was a twenty-twenty-two compensation, I think, early this year. I'm not, don't, don't hold me to that. So again, to move this forward, so we don't debate it forever, I'll make a motion that we offer a five percent across the board wage increase on salary with a one-time COLA payment paid January first or second of twenty-twenty-three in the amount of fifteen hundred to the full-time employee who's served all of twenty-twenty-two, and to have that prorated to any employee that was put on board during the twenty-twenty-two calendar year.
I, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Just, I guess I'd like to, sorry, go ahead.
I, I was gonna, you're gonna open it up for discussion anyhow, right?
Yes, yep, I'll open it up for discussion.
Just one other comment I wanted to make about salaries and our, our structure. Five percent to the guy at the top is a huge rage compared to five percent to the guy on the bottom.
I, I'm, yep, and I agree, and I put in there, if you want to put that to a dollar amount, I'm, I'm fine with that. The other thing I think needs to be part of this discussion, which will be follow-up discussion, is kind of a follow-up, I think we need as a board to review department head compensation, to take a, a look at that, to include this and to be independent of what we're doing here right now.
So if I hear you correctly, Commissioner, you're saying that your thought is to look at some disparities in base salaries on some of the department heads, is that correct?
Well, I, I don't want, yeah, so I don't want to do a broad brush, treating employees and department heads different. We've, we've already had discussion this morning that work, some of the department heads are going to do some merging of responsibilities that they had, I think, overtime to department heads has to be part of that discussion. And, you know, talk about them being exempt versus non-exempt, so that, that's, that's what's going through my mind right now.
Well, I think, think that's kind of a little bit hasty to make the motion on the raise then before we talk about that and we can actually look at the numbers.
Okay, well, if you want to revert back to department heads first and overtime on that, that's fine as well, but I'm, I was just trying to move this forward.
Yeah, my, for myself, I would like to see what numbers, Joetta comes up back with on insurances, before we make a decision on whether or not to offer insurance as part of this raise.
She said it's going to be two to three weeks before you get that, I don't know. I mean, if, if you want to wait that long to do the package, that's fine. That, that would be my concern is, all of a sudden, you're going to put yourself in a box budget-wise because Karen has to do the mill.
I have to determine the mill levies and do, get the, yes, I have, by the seventeenth, I have to have my estimated tax statements inputted. Now, you guys will have a chance to obviously have the budget sheets and go over for the final budget approval, but you can not increase a mill or anything like that more than what is sent out in the estimated tax statements. So that's why we have to have this discussion today is, is because I have no idea-
I don't want to tie us up into something at this point until we have all those numbers, like with these raises and stuff.
Okay, but I, and, and I understand that, but I have to get the estimated tax statements out, so.
Let's, uh, I'm going to call for the question. I think everybody understands what each of us are concerned about, but my concern is that Karen needs to have a number to the state by the seventeenth, and to get to that number, you're going to need five, six, seven, or more days to get it done.
Yes, I mean, I still have to get it all inputted and I have to calculate all the cities and the schools and everything else. They don't have to have their budgets into me until the tenth, and I have to have their calculations out by the seventeenth, so.
Keeping in mind that you can, once you submit it, your preliminary to the state, you cannot go up.
You cannot go down, you cannot go up in, in mill levies, but you can decrease for the final budget.
Yes.
Decrease, yes. The only, the only entity that can actually increase their mills from the estimated tax statements to the final budget are schools. Everybody else can only decrease.
Okay, so we have to have our figures in before you do all your things?
Well, no matter what, a lot of these are not affected necessarily
By the mill.
By the mill, like the, the mill only covers so much. I mean, when we're milling dollars, you know, clearly we spend more than six million dollars in a year, but we have other revenue sources, so it doesn't so much affect that portion. I just need to see where the commission is at so that I can, I can know as far as even determining individual budgets, if, if you want to put the department heads from hourly to exempt, I can take out their overtime line items and put them on exempt. I just, it's those kind of things, it is going to bring the overall number down, so down, up, that stuff makes a difference. Salaries is just the biggest thing. The other stuff is pretty much set, so.
So if my motion was premature, I'd certainly withdraw it if you want to have more discussion.
We call the questions, I suppose.
Okay, what can do, roll call vote? Commissioner Messer?
I got one question before you go with it. Does this include the governing board in this, or is that where it's exempted?
I think that's a separate discussion.
Okay. But I mean, it's part of the raise, I guess, too.
Yeah, right.
We can't really pass this without-
That's why I said maybe we're premature with my motion, which would be fine, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Whatever the chair wants to do with it.
Do you want to rescind your motion?
Sure, I'll withdraw it.
Okay, motion withdrawn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Was there a second? I missed a second to withdraw.
Yeah, and I have to vote no on that because I wasn't asked to rescind my second.
Oh. Are you rescinding your second, sir?
I will.
Okay, second is rescinded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
So maybe you guys want to start with your department head discussion on exempt or non-exempt, and that'd be a good place to start, so that I have an idea.
Yeah, I would move that all department heads are exempt status.
My second.
And part of the discussion is that all overtime is supposed to be approved, and it's, how does a department head, you know, do that and, you know, comply and those kind of things? So that's, that's part of my thought process right here is if, if there are departments which are more busy one time versus another, I'm just saying, you know, do the job and if you need to take a day off as compensation somewhere else, just get your job done, I guess, because it's so tough to monitor and supervise.
I wouldn't know where, is there issues with?
I don't know if there is issue, I don't think we know.
Could you come up, Shauna?
Yeah.
I would, Shauna Davenport, so for me, I think I'll probably be the one that will be the hardest because I'm twenty-four-seven, you know, I'm always on call, so I do already get quite a bit of overtime from that, so it'll be probably me more than the other ones that might just have one week where they're doing something versus the other, so.
Well, I think-
I think that'll keep you out of the office a lot more than you would like to be because you get, at certain times, you get so much extra.
Yeah, but I have to, like, right?
Well, exactly.
That's just what the job calls for.
Yeah, and I think those are things that you can work out
Yeah.
With your portfolio.
Yeah.
And the portfolio holder keeping the rest of the commissioners on, on task of what, what's going on and-
I think, I think Neil's motion or Neil voted for that because there just isn't any. You know, I think there's been asked and, I mean, Shauna's been good for me, but there's just not enough oversight on-
I agree.
On overtime at all.
I agree.
You know, when it goes straight from, if we, there was somebody in the middle, it would be easier, but it goes straight from department head, straight to commissioner. We don't have somebody in the middle to monitor that overtime.
And most of the time, the commissioner doesn't even know it goes directly to payroll.
Exactly.
Right?
And that's what I mean, there's not a middle person to be monitoring that overtime to make sure it's correct. But and then I can see with, on Shauna's side where she needs, she needs to be non-exempt.
I mean, it's totally up to you, I'm just saying that it'd probably be my department that is the one that will be like-
Well, and, and part of it goes back and maybe we make your department non-exempt, or, you know, to allow, to accommodate for that. Part of it, we just, we've had some experiences where we didn't, you know, it was just overtime accumulated, 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 and all of a sudden, boom, it would-
Yeah, for the most part, I try and if it's within a pay period, I'll try and flex, you know, as much as I can, but when there's things that I just can't miss, it is what it is, right?
Neil, would you maybe want to just list out the departments that you're going to be putting as exempt, and then that way we can just have a list and it's documented?
Uh, I don't want to forget any. I would be, okay, so I'm, can we, under discussion, are we, people or individuals thinking that maybe the emergency manager should be non-exempt? I don't know. What's, what's the thoughts?
You would have to amend your motion. There's been a motion and a second on, unless you would like to rescind your motion and add that in to another.
Well, somebody else could make an amendment, but-
I guess I agree with emergency management and I also, I guess I would agree with out at the fairgrounds because the summertime is impossible to keep under forty hours. Impossible. With all the weekends going on out there.
Well, I did talk to Lisa a little bit about this and she actually was supportive of it. She thought she could flex her time as we talk
Okay.
Off-season, and, um-
Okay, well, that's fine then.
I mean, I, I don't want to put words into her mouth, but we, 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 we talked about this concept and all this kind of stuff and, and I wish she was back to re, re and state what we talked about, but, again, it's real difficult to monitor that as well because she is out there, weekends when we're not doing those things, so.
I mean, there's, without, I mean, I know that, I mean, maybe that needs to be kind of kept track of and monitored for down the road and so, you know, it's easily, is more trackable, because I know there's a lot of time that's just given.
Yeah. So one more quick question. I'm, I'm looking for your sheet and I can't find it. Do you know about what the overtime was for your position last year?
Oh, it was five thousand, but that includes obviously Nikita and Joel in, in it.
Right, okay.
This year I took it down to two thousand.
Okay, for yourself or for staff?
The whole, yeah, the whole group.
But you have more than one budget that you're working with, right? You have it in both nine-one-one.
Yes, there's overtime in both.
Yes.
I don't remember what, let me grab that.
Okay.
Two already?
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, um, so, oh, sorry, overtime and emergency management, three thousand, and then two thousand, and the nine-one-one.
And that gets distributed not only you and, not only staff, but yourself as well?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and we have to realize too that Shauna did take on- You know, and we have to realize too, that Shawna did take on a whole new department this last year and a half. I mean, she pretty much just got asked and thrown into the IT. So, I mean, she took a whole.
I mean, it's fine, if we want to try and do, um, exempt, obviously, I could, we could revisit it next year and just see how it, it went for me as a year. I mean, I don't, it's completely up to you guys. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just, I just know that it'll be me the one that really is.
And I understand that, and I, I, I want to figure out a way to be unfair.
Yeah.
I can just see the, some of the feedback's going to be, if, well, you know, victim witness, she has to go and, you know, uh, evenings, weekends, all that kind of stuff.
But you gave her an extra pay raise to accommodate her going to exempt last year.
Yes, we did. And she should have been here.
She should have.
She should have been here, if, you know, to explain herself.
Well, she, she's not a department head, um, Amanda's over hers.
Does anybody want to amend Neil's motion to exclude emergency management?
I will.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
My second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Commissioner?
Let's, let's discuss that.
Discuss, okay.
Amendment real quick, so, yeah, so we can, um, visit with it twelve months from now if we pass this, I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure we're on top of this and continue to discuss it, if that's okay.
Okay.
Are we voting on the amendment, or are we voting on the?
Yeah, so we vote on the amendment to prove it or disapprove it and then.
Do we vote, vote on the motion and then the amendment?
No, the amendment first.
Amendment first.
Okay, we're voting on the amendment for all department heads to be exempt.
No, no, just Shawna's.
For Shawna, for emergency management to be
Non-exempt.
Non-exempt. Commissioner, um, Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Now we will vote on the motion.
The amended motion.
The amended motion that department, all the other department heads are overtime exempt. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Zander? Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
I think we needed to vote on the ARPA funding for the new council for the dispatch rate.
Yes, that would be amazing, seventy, seventy thousand.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on to approve the ARPA spending for the new council for dispatch. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote on that, Commissioner, um, Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner, um, Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
That does not include wages for somebody that's going to be taking that spot, then. Just, that's just the council.
Just the one-time council?
Yes, because that comes out of ARPA, yeah, but.
Yes.
Yep.
And that will be coming out of ARPA funds.
Yep.
Okay. Did you want, um, I know that Joanna had sent out some information on, some good information on ranges and everything else. I know that has to do with the department heads and, um, other discussions. Did you guys want her to talk about that? Because I know there was some confusion. It's totally up to you guys, but.
What do we want to do? Do we want to go to, I guess I kind of understood it. Does, um, you want to go to department heads now? On salary, Commissioner Zander?
I I'm not ready to talks or address specifics. I'd like to visit with department heads that I think need some, uh, adjustment in base salary. But I'm not ready to formally, um, take take it to a motion or anything like that at this point.
Do we want to? I mean, on that?
Yeah.
Do we want to, like, have to schedule a special meeting for, it would have to be next week?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand where you would want some time to look at numbers.
Well, and I, so my comment to that front would be, the information that Joanna distributed was, uh, good information, it's valuable. But it does, it's not all encompassing, encompassing, uh, it didn't address the issue of, uh, years of service. It, you know, personally, I would throw out Cass County and a couple of these other counties that we really can't compete with, uh, and so if, if, I'm not ready either, I don't know who just said that, I just think it needs to be, uh, visited and addressed and, and, uh, that's, that's my comment at this point, and I don't know how we accommodate Karen's deadline, uh, by doing that.
We never accommodate Karen's deadlines. I think that's how we accommodate Karen's deadlines. I think if you guys want to, I can work with, if you want to do across the board, five percent for all employees, and then just exclude department heads, have those discussions, and then come back, at least I could put the five percent across the board for all employees and take out the department heads until you guys can have that discussion, you know, at least update those numbers. Um, so that's, that's up to you guys, but, um, that's probably the, the only thing I can think of, because I think there's multiple departments that.
So if we agree on a COLA, that doesn't have to be in the budget, because we can vote that out of the ARPA.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
So you can pretty much just put in a five percent estimate to get your tax statements and paperwork done, because you know we're going to be around that.
Right.
Yeah.
And I can do that for, um, all the employees.
Yep.
And everything, um, I can, I can definitely put that in, I mean, of five percent, if that's where you guys.
I mean, like I said, if we're going to be around that, I mean, if it's.
That seems to be the consensus, somewhere in that range, you're either four or five plus some number, some benefit.
Because you could put five, because we can always go down, we just can't go up.
And that's.
So just put in five and we can always go down.
That's.
We just can't go up.
Yeah.
We don't have to make a, we can go home and look over these numbers, and we don't have to make the decision on it today.
Okay, and then, did you want to schedule, um, any sort of, and especially now that I know kind of what we want to put in for the capital improvements and everything like that, that'll make a big difference. Did you guys want to, um, schedule anything as far as a department head meeting next week, or are you going to talk to people individually? Like, do I need to schedule a special meeting?
Well, we'll have to, I mean, we because all five of us will have to discuss it, so it'll have to be a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, do you know of, uh, which date works for everybody? Because I'll have to get that noticed.
Is it, is, is there room for discussing the department head issues that we're talking about, that, uh, each commissioner would take a look at their portfolio department heads and relate to Karen any information that you might want her to include in, in that, um, preliminary budget? I mean, I, you know, it's easy for me, because I only have one or two departments, but, um, I don't want to put Karen in a bind either.
If you have an estimated, that's not going to put you in a bind, if you have something in mind.
If I do, if I do have an estimated, yes. So we can go with the estimated, and then we can revisit, um, some of these other discussions.
We can always go lower, we just can't go higher. So is that a consensus of the commission? She goes in with the estimated of five, and if we need to go lower, we can, but we just can't go higher?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, that's what we do. Do we need a motion on that?
No, you just need to tell me, so. Um, my last question is, are, do you want me to go in with the estimated tax statements at the previous general mill of thirty-one point one-two? Do you want me to keep it at that same number? I know we're going to have to address some other things, um, you know, balances, et cetera. But I'm just wondering what you would like that number to be around.
Well, thirty point one-two would hit about six point six million.
Thirty-one point one-two.
Yeah, would hit about, based on two-hundred-and-twelve thousand per mill, would be about six point six million.
Yep, if we go in there, that'd be at six million, six hundred and four thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and five cents.
Okay, and in twenty-twenty-two, we levied six million, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, some odd dollars?
Yeah, it's a two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cent difference because of the mill value, that thirty-one point two would be worth issue. What would you like me to put on that estimated tax statements?
My question would be back to you, does that two-hundred-and-eighty-some thousand you just mentioned, does cover the increase in expenses that were just talked about putting in the budget for the general fund?
Yes, with the oil, with the oil and gas money, it currently does, I mean, the property values, I mean, we're going to have other revenues, this is just the portion. I guess my more question is, if we put it in at thirty-one point one-two, and I will send out, you know, those sheets with the totals on them, and you guys can see that, and if you decide I will have those, before I publish that mill, I will, um, be sending you guys the sheet to see where it's at and see what the final certificate is before I input it.
Okay.
Because I don't want any issues.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, too. Is there anything else up for discussion? Department heads, any questions? If so.
Um, actually, I did have one question. On, on my budget, we have Lana, we do have some increases taking place. Would somebody be able to meet with me? Obviously, I don't have a portfolio holder, but I would like to discuss those things.
I can meet with you.
Okay.
Any more questions? If not, I would love to entertain a motion to dismiss.
Motion to adjourn.
What are you going to dismiss?
The rest of the, adjourn, dismiss the class.
Class is over.
Yep. Oh, motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
Second.
My second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.